I've got six o'clock on the nose. It is, what is today? It's Thursday the sometime?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth. Welcome to the select board meeting. First item is set adjusted agenda. Nothing? Everybody good? Anybody got anything? All right, roll. Agenda, we have max communication with the audience. Anyone here to discuss anything that's not on the agenda? We'll discuss them.
What do you mean?
State your name.
Public service.
Anywhere you like.
My name's Les. I'm the public information representative of Alcoholics Anonymous for this area. And as part of my job, I want to reach out to the communities and let you know what's going on with AA here. In Hardwick, we have two meetings going on right now. We have one on Monday night. Tricia died, and then one on Thursday morning at St. John's. AA is, sometimes gets a bad rap because a lot of people think, well, it's a cult, it's religious. All AA is, is a place for people who can't quit drinking, is what it comes down to. And it's a fellowship. We have, they actually founded it by two promoters. By me, Bill Wilson, and by me, Bob Smith, Bob Smith from St. John'sbury. And they, in 1935, got together, Bill Wilson was on a business, a business assignment. And he knew he was gonna drink, and he got a little bob, and they started bobbing. That's pretty much how AA works, is when alcohol talks into another. We have, in the Northeast Kingdom, we have about thirty-five meetings going on right now. I'll left some information if you'd like to look at. It is a twelve-step program, and that scares a lot of people, a lot of twelve steps. And what the twelve steps are really, is it's a, kind of AA's version of the wisdom of the ages that they banished for the alcoholic. You know, they talk about it's not religious, it's spiritual. It's spiritual because the principles are, you know, help others, make commands, reexamine your life from time to time. You know, those are all things that, you know, if, if there was such a thing as a cult, that'd be a good cult, I think. But on Monday, we have, we have open and closed meetings. The open meetings, anybody can attend. And it's anonymous, you know? You may have to give your first name if you don't want. The closed meetings are for those who identify as an alcoholic. And the only membership to be in AA, it's a tough membership requirement, all you gotta have is a desire to quit drinking. That's all you gotta have. The other thing about AA that people don't, sometimes don't understand. AA welcomes drug addicts, anybody, anybody that wants help. The open meetings are designed to make people feel welcome when they come in. We feel like AA might be the last best chance that somebody has to get into recovery. So, I don't know if you have any questions or not, but I really appreciate you giving me the time. And like I said, I left some information there. And I hope that, I'm trying, within the community, I dropped some information off at the library, and I didn't drop some information off at the police station. And I'm hoping that, you know, word will get out that, you know, AA is here, and it really works, it can really help people. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
That's a good summary. Can you say one more time the meeting times that are here?
Monday at seven o'clock.
Yeah.
Seven PM.
Yeah.
That's at Church of God. And then Thursday at eight AM at St. John's.
Great.
I left the meetings here.
Great. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, great. Next select board, we have to approve minutes from the regular select board meeting of October the third.
Move to approve minutes as Blackcomb is adjourned.
Any discussion?
Second.
Oh, yeah, that's good. Any discussion? I thought they were good. On favor of approving minutes as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next time manager report, Mr. Upson.
Hello, welcome to the meeting tonight. So, we have an update on the lead service inventory, which is, which Amy submitted on Wednesday. Jason's here to talk about the wastewater plan, but you can maybe ask, answer any questions about the lead service inventory if you have specific questions. We have sixty-five percent on the customer side, forty-one percent on the service side. That's, the service side is on the other side of the curb stop, from the curb stop into the main, the water main. We have to identify those as well.
Those are ours.
Yeah, yeah.
So what are your two numbers again?
Sixty-five percent on the customer side.
Done?
Sixty-five percent complete.
Complete the service.
And we know what it is.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
And this is a working document. Okay, so we're gonna keep going forward. And then forty-one percent on the service side, and that's from the curb stop back to the main.
How do you know what that is without digging it up?
Historical knowledge, work that has been done on the water system.
You can see, Bill Chris will show you.
Yeah, replacement services. So, we're working towards a ninety-nine point nine percent goal in the next, you know, couple of, in the next year, I would say. So, phase two is, we have to, there's ways we can identify the line, the service line, but in some case, worst-case scenario, we'd have to dig it up and check it.
And we would have to?
Worst-case scenario.
Wow.
Yeah.
Okay.
But...
And we're doing this why?
It's a requirement by the...
EPA mandate, every, every, every public water system in the country has to do it right now. And there's a, there's a ten-year goal by the administration to replace lead services nationwide within ten years.
This is an ongoing project.
So, Dave, just an update, you actually have fifty-five on the municipal side and seventy-eight on the customer side.
Okay, so we're still...
Let's thank some customers.
We're, we're...
That's good.
It's, information is trickling in.
Seventy-eight and fifty-five.
It's good.
Yeah.
This was a ten, uh...
Last Friday.
Ten-eleven number.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
This is as of yesterday.
Good.
So, do we want to tell people who might be watching that if they still haven't done their survey...
Keep sending the information out.
You're becoming the minority of people who are not participating in this program.
Well, we spent...
But that's important.
We spent quite a bit of time last week knocking on doors after hours. I was up here all week, Lee was out a few nights, Kenny was out a few nights.
Amanda.
Amanda was out. We put out flyers for people. We left a lot. There weren't a lot of answers on doors. Some people took the flyers, but it gets lost.
Yeah.
So...
I think that's what happened to you, right?
I did it online. I think.
We should do it, we should do it on Halloween.
What's that?
We should do it on Halloween night.
Give it to it.
Check out!
People will...
I was free. Good idea. Okay, moving along. So, I had an end-of-the-season meeting with our cemetery section, Kirk Guard Services. Get an update on the cemetery status and the work that was completed over the summer. Our seven cemeteries, all of our cemeteries, they straightened three-hundred-and-six stones, they repaired forty-eight stones, and fixed a little over a dozen sunken graves. I've noticed it in some of the cemeteries where they prop stones back up, they glue the stones back together. So, he's gonna give me another list of items to work on for next season to include repairing the shed, painting the shed, fence repair. The fence up at Center Cemetery is in need of some TLC. So, this is an ongoing project to make sure that, you know, the...
So, we budgeted a line item now, because all of our cemeteries are together?
We have a cemetery capital that we...
I think that's an excellent way to handle our cemeteries.
What's that?
Contract them out, have someone with an annual plan budget. Seems pretty simple.
Seems professional. Thank you, thank you.
Yep. Just an update on the insurance work at the fire station. The SCBA compressor and all of the associated equipment was installed, so that's operational. And we've started to do some preliminary budget work to present to the select board. We're working on that now. And I have one additional dog bite, I just wanted to...
Thank you for handling the...
Throw the dog bite stuff out there. I've had a crazy amount of dog bites in the last couple of weeks. So, I don't know, they must be feeling the...
The moon, it's a full, hardest moon.
Coming or something. But that's it for me.
Great. Questions for...
Oh, I have one more. So, we did, this is on my sticky note, so that's why I... So, we did crunch some numbers on the gravel pit and the stay mat crushing. And we made stay mat for twelve twenty-five a cubic yard. And we're buying it in Danville for sixteen seventy-five a cubic yard. So, that's before Trump.
That's a tunnel.
No, we did the conversion. We did, we broke it down in cubic yards based on the truckloads in the past in place.
What was the Danville total?
Sixteen seventy-five cubic yards.
Sweet!
We broke it, pulled down in cubic yards. You can check Casey's numbers if you want.
So, basically, it's cheaper and it's closer.
Yeah. And we added the seventy-five thousand that we've allocated for the prep, equipment consulting, and the crushing of the five hundred cubic yards. We have about, added seventy-five thousand, we have about twenty thousand left. And I've got a proposal from an engineer, from Monley Engineering, that's gonna do the Act Two Fifty submission. And that's for seventy-five hundred dollars, so I'm gonna go forward with that. And then we'll keep...
Any other work we can do this year, or the crusher's out of there?
Yeah, so hopefully the crusher's gonna come back in in the spring, and we'll use the remainder of that twenty thousand to crush that material, because we won't have...
The blasted material.
Yeah, yeah. And we'll sort through that and keep the rock, and then we'll get, we'll get some eight-inch minus, some riprap stone out there too.
Part of that was also blasted?
Yeah.
So, there'll be some sorting of that?
Yeah.
So, that'll be ditched stone?
Yeah.
Is that, so eight-inch minus is what we typically use for ditch stone?
Well, we've done four to six, but that's gone bye-bye now. Just because of the weather, weather events, it's just not holding no more. So, we've gone up to eight inch.
Okay.
So...
Great, that is great.
Still going in.
Thank you.
And we'll keep on giving you the information and keep on working the material up there.
And for the permitting, is that anticipated, that we get that done by next year sometime?
I think it's gonna be done this winter.
But, yeah.
Right off the bat.
Indeed, okay.
Yeah. We were, we collected the seismic readings from the blasting. So, we're able, we're able to submit that with Act Two Fifty amendment, which is gonna help.
Oh, okay.
Because we put them in, on private property north and south of...
Great. So, that'll add that data point. Good?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, moving along. Next is road foreman report, Tom Fadden.
So, we've been plugging along. We've gotten out through Nichols and gotten out through the Armackville area, we got that all done. We've gotten, for flood parts, we've redid Smith Farm, Tucker Brook, Kate Brook, Marshville Bunker. That end's all done, we've gotten covered. Today, we've been working on over towards Hardwick Farms, Porter Brook area, Pumpkin Lane. We ended up going around Mountainville and Ward Hill, finishing that up. So, tomorrow, we'll be heading towards Montgomery, Stevens Lane, Bailey Hazen Road. Hopefully, we can get that end buttoned up, hopefully tomorrow. And then by next week, the weather looks like it's still good, we'll be heading on Bridgeman Side, start up through there. We did do the crest ledge on Hardwick Farms. So, we did three-hundred and, I think it was like three-hundred-and-twenty yards, three-hundred-and-twenty-two yards. So, that's from the bridge, just about to the top, top of the hill. And we put the chloride right to it, we made like seven passes right on it.
Great.
I asked the guys how it looked today, because I was in the greater George Ward Hill, and they said it looks like it's packing good. We were kinda so sold spreading it down the hill, because there's a lot of stone, so we didn't know whether, you know, maybe next time they come around. Gonna have Trevor come back over and take a look, look at it too, from the crushing, just to see if we needed to crush it down a little bit more, so we can get more fines to it, so it would pack a little bit better. But the way it looks right now, it looks like it's working good, so...
How thick did you spread it?
Probably about six, eight inches thick.
Also pretty thick.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And is that, that was, that must have taken care of most of that pile?
No, we still have, I think, probably a couple hundred more yards left. So, but gravel pile's going fast, so probably by the time we get done, the end of next week, we'll probably be almost through it all, so on the roads. Guys have been going around doing some of the hit lists that OPI had, getting that stuff done, some of the stuff around the village. They fixed a couple headers that were, that let loose on Hardwick Farms today, got that. We still gotta go up Towne Farm, the upper park, fix the ditch area up through there. So, hopefully, by the end of next week, I'm hoping we'll have everything all buttoned up for the winter, so...
The weather's gonna treat us nicely.
Weather permitting, yes.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's a big help.
Maybe it's changed, but someday, I was over, I don't know, the, when did we meet the score person for the...
Wednesday?
Yeah, Wednesday?
Wednesday, it was yesterday.
Oh, yeah.
It was just yesterday, it was just so cold.
Just different. I think we saw the Creamery Road sign was still laying down over there, is that...
Oh, yeah, it's going back up.
It's going back up.
Yeah, I don't know whether the guys ended up putting it back up today or not. But that was the other thing they were doing yesterday too, they were running around, we got a whole load of new signs, so they were running around putting all new signs up and stuff around town and stuff. Yeah, pickup truck or something hit it this time, so... Actually coming out from Creamery Road, because the sign was bent out, Josh said. So, they drove up towards the telephone pole where it was, hit it, then back up and turned and went that way, so...
Trevor.
So, if you're the person...
Third time's a charm show.
...reaching people on ACT. There was a sheriff down the south that did that.
Pointing all people out.
Yeah, yeah, it worked. I will find you.
All right. Thank you. Next up, police department report, given by Mike Henry.
Well, this is good news, I don't have anything to report at this point. So, we're just trying to keep our heads above water and with staffing and plug it away.
How many more weeks do we have to recruit down to the academy for?
Should be ready to go by January one, hopefully.
And she's doing well.
She's doing very well.
Very good. Awesome. Good. Questions?
No news is good news.
Next up, we have a Hardwick Electric Department reporting, Roger Preho.
Right, hello, I'll come up to the front row, the back row. Things to report for you. One, I wanted to just confirm what I think some of you have observed already, that our interim general manager, Scott Johnstone, is having a really good effect on things. We had assumed that he was coming in to be kind of the caretaker placeholder, you know, to give us coverage until we had hired our new GM. But he has enough experience and relevant, close by and nearby experience, that he's just had a nice approach of listening to customers, listening to people in the community, and really importantly for us, listening to the employees, office employees and field employees. And we knew we had issues, particularly in the field, because we had people turning over and leaving, which left us understaffed. And he was pretty quickly able, through his experience and the way he goes about it, to hear, you know, what the real issues and concerns were. And then as he started addressing those things, he was intern, I think you heard last month, Miles, when he reported, that he's now got us fully staffed in the field, which we were afraid might take us much longer. But I wanted to give credit where it's due to him, that he's changing the culture over there in a good way, where I think the employees are feeling listened to. Now, part of that means that they're drawing his attention, things that have been neglected, that are irritating him. And some of the themes are maintenance, sometimes involving safety, facilities, conditions and repairs. And he's put in front of the commissioners, a list of projects. Some of them were already approved, and they were sort of half-completed by his predecessor. And he's now basically just trying to get them done. Because I think it's especially annoying when they rip out the bathroom and they don't finish building the new bathroom. But that's just one example of other things in the office area. We also had some roof leaks. So, he's, one by one, listening, identifying, you know, making a list of things that make sense, bringing it to the commissioners, we're approving it, and he's getting the things done. So, I think all in all, that's a real positive. And really appreciate that interim general manager is actually having a huge impact. We are continuing to recruit for the general manager. We, as you know, I think we have a candidate that's in front of us, and, you know, we'll get it filled. But we're in a good place, I think, in the interim arrangement. Another area that we've often reported to you, and I think run in the town, it's no different than Hardwick Electric. You know, most things that come up, especially regulatory, usually involve extra cost. We actually had a remarkable thing that none of us were aware was coming, which was, there was a ruling on where, how transmission fees were gonna be charged to entities like Hardwick Electric. And they're actually called wheeling fees, which is basically if power, when we buy power, when VEPSA buys power for us from someone who's a long way away generating power, it has to get here and it goes over other people's lines. And those other people's lines have traditionally been paid a fair amount of money to get the power to us. So, GMP has been charging us a fair amount of money in those so-called wheeling fees. And in particular, hydro, we get a lot of hydro energy from New York State that comes across. And this new ruling is gonna actually save us two-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand dollars a year, which is, you know, I thought it was noteworthy to mention it, because just about everything else we hear about these days is gonna cost us twenty, two-hundred thousand dollars a year, so... So, that's a good one. And, you know, now, on the other side of that, remember the July flood came through and really hammered Walcott Hydro facility? And we've been working through assessing the damage and what the costs are gonna be for repairs. And the Penn stock is gonna be a very expensive repair. What that has done is it's put us into a new cycle with FEMA of getting funds. So, we're in that process of assessing the damage privately with FEMA. And it's gonna be, it's gonna be a long time before Hardwick, between, before the Walcott Hydro facility's back up and running. It should have been running by the end of the summer, but of course, July sent it all back again. So, stay tuned on that. The order of magnitude is, could be as large as, you know, a million dollars of repairs from July.
Just on the PENS, for mostly the...
Well, mostly the Penn stock, mostly. So, that's an update. You'll, you'll hear more buzz about that, and we'll work through it. Fortunately, there's funds available, and we'll just work through together. The other thing you might hear about, you remember we reported that we approved the AMI, which is the metering that's gonna go out in the next couple of years to all households? VEPSA is, for all of the municipals, is working on a process for each of us that'll be a technology roadmap. Because when you think of the AMI as an enabling technology, the meter's there and can do a whole bunch of things. We'll have a basic level of information and benefit from it. But then it can also enable different billing rates for electric vehicles, it can be different time of day billing rates. It can enable a whole bunch of things. So, VEPSA is doing a technology roadmap, so that we can pull together the right approach. And that's an example of the kind of thing, and we're not really staffed to do here in Hardwick Electric, where we need some more high-power capabilities to pull it together. So, that's gonna be going on. And often, you know, ratepayers ask those questions, or what are we doing to stay, to get closer to the leading edge, not stay on the leading edge? And that's an example of one thing that's just kicking off now. The other thing that we approved at the last commissioners' meeting is, you might recall hearing some complaints from ratepayers where, when they need to upgrade their, their service, and, you know, typical reasons for an upgrade would be a big renovation of a home, and they might have a really old service, and they needed to upgrade to two-hundred amp service from one-hundred or even less. There's also the issue of people who are putting in EV chargers or heat pumps or other things. So, this whole concept of electrification is gonna hit our older, our older properties with the need for new transformers. And the way the policy used to be applied here, which we've changed, is that if there was a transformer on the pole serving the residents, and it was inadequately sized, it would come down, it would go back to, to our yard, and it'd be held for, for actually looking for a new place to deploy it, where it would fit. And then the individual or the ratepayer would pay the full cost of the new transformer. And what we voted on was that if that transformer coming out still has any book value, that is, has been depreciated down to zero, that if it still has that value in it, that we'll net that out of the cost of the new one. So that the, the person getting the upgrade is just paying the increment of cost for the new one. Now, some projects, that'll be important, some places, if it's a really old transformer, it won't help a lot. But it's just an example of what we're hearing and we're understanding, that people just are not gonna be happy if they find out that to do an EV charger, to do some new electrification in their home, that they have a big transformer expense. So, we're gonna try to find ways to ease up on that. So, those are the key, key topics I wanted to cover. Anything else? In the way of questions for what we're doing?
Oh, that's good, that seems positive. I mean, I'll chime in with your kudos to Scott. I recently had an inquiry from someone at CIE looking to try to estimate their usage and their billing for their new building at Yellow Barn. And I sent her over to Scott, who replied quickly, courteously, yes, we can help you, and it's working with her. So, it's just, it's been good.
I drove into the shop, and the yard is absolutely full of vehicles. I'm like, wow, been a long time since I've driven down here into this yard. There's no roof or no more pickups in the yard, so...
It's fully staffed.
Fully staffed, for sure.
Yeah. Great, so that's great. Yeah, it's, uh...
I've heard, I've heard the chatter from the, from the staff, you know, on my end, diner, the diner gossip. They all seem really happy right now. They're all looking forward to the bright future, they all plan on staying around. All the things you've, you know, quite contrary to what you used to hear in the diner. Yeah, it's all positive.
Yeah. So, the, so, you know, we'll do our best to recruit someone with the right experience and the right capabilities. But Scott is pretty unique in that he's got a lot of experience and a lot of seasoning, and it's relevant experience, because it's right here, so that's hard to match. I think it's a good example of what we've been trying to look to as a vision for the future, is a lot more collaboration. Instead of Hardwick Electric running as an isolated island, that's defiantly doing whatever it wants to do, that it really is collaborating more with neighboring municipals. And what VEPSA's working towards is that we have an ongoing closer rapport with Morrisville, maybe with Johnson, and that they could have each other's backs and tackle problems together instead of separately. That's, that's part of what you're talking about, what it used to be.
Right, and we had the discussion with, was it Scott that came and talked to us? You know, about the future and the little, little utilities kinda have to come together in a bunch of, bunch of different ways if it's gonna be successful, because otherwise, it's not gonna be able to make it soon.
But it takes people who are inclined toward being collaborative...
Yes.
...to make it work, which we've got right now. So, we'll, we'll keep that in mind as we do the recruiting. So we'll keep that in mind as we do the recruiting. So that's it.
Thank you.
Yeah. Actually enjoyed the last couple of Hardwick Electric updates. In the past 15 years, I don't think we can say that right now.
I hear, I hear you.
Thanks a lot, Roger. Next up, we have a flood resilient report given by Kristen Lakey.
I just learned something.
Hey, you need an advert or something?
Yeah, that's the same.
The bathroom wasn't finished.
There's a long history in there.
Oh, that's why I didn't have a permit.
They didn't have a statement.
Booze.
Yeah. Do you have the?
I'm pulling it up right now.
So this is not the comprehensive. We'd be here for the rest of the meeting. I just picked a couple of topics and...
So what's in our packet? That's the comprehensive?
No, I don't even think you have it in your packet.
You had it in our folder.
In our folder. Not, not here, but in our folder, electric folder.
So that's, it's just a, it's not the comprehensive. And I will have an updated comprehensive that I will drop into next month, November 7th. But I'm not going to be there.
Yeah.
So...
Well, this is plenty comprehensive for me.
Yeah, it's not everything.
It wasn't 127 pages. This guy belongs with me.
176. So if you can just, is it easier for me to do it or you?
I can do it.
Okay. Nope, that's, you gotta go, you gotta go back and go do a slide. Thank you. Okay, so I'm starting with the first four, which were the properties we bought last year. You're all pretty well familiar with them, but I'm really looking to next steps. So we have the Mill Street property where, if, can we stay on that one for a second? I'll say, I'll say ding. So Mill Street property, where the inwas came down the day before the second set of flooding in July. We have requested a, we did a pre-application for our hazard mitigation grant. We received one of the few so far requests to apply for those grants. And we just heard this morning that the river program, which I will describe later, is going to be doing our application components. So that's a good start. And, I mean, we're looking at a $700,000 project that will be fully funded if it goes through. So all of these are together. They did do a temporary stabilization in front of Hayes. This project would be doing, would be doing stabilization, further stabilization of that entire, what's become kind of like the Mill Pond returning and floodplain restoration. So taking out some of the fill, but restoring. If we were to do just an armoring, we would be seeing a lot more issues down in the downstream in Hardwick Center. We're seeing, some of the issues we're seeing now is because Route 15 got armored, etc. So the last thing we want to do is make it worse in the center, because we're already having issues from the armoring that was done. So this one is pretty much set. I just wanted to give you a heads up on what, where it's at. Ding.
Hey. What? Where are the, are you going to talk about what river is going to give us?
Yes, I'm gonna. That's in number 12.
Okay.
So this was, this is, do you want him?
No, you. I'm going to ask a question about the previous slide.
Yeah, sure.
Just timeframe?
Timeframe?
Because it looks like, yes, so we're applying for funding, it's a big project. What's a rough timeframe?
So our, our application is due in November. Hopefully, we can have all our components done by then, which is engineering and benefit cost analysis and feasibility. Now that we know the river is going to be doing it, I think it's feasible. I was getting a little panicky because we are, this is one of the few golden tickets you can apply. To put it in perspective, they received $400 million in requests and they have $67 million. So we are one of the projects that felt this should be pushed forward. Then it goes, so it goes through that step to the state and then it goes to FEMA. Two years, three years? I don't know. This will be our first one, this is, this is our first time.
Not fast.
Not fast.
Not going to be touched next year.
I don't believe so.
But I think maybe the following year.
I don't believe so. But we do have an EWP, which could be coming any day now and could be happening next year to further stabilize.
Okay.
Okay? So that's kind of the mini dance we did, because we know that EWP is not fast. It's faster, but it's faster than FEMA. FEMA, the point with this is that it's not going to cost a tactic. And it will eventually do the entire thing, not just a small bit.
Yeah, great.
Okay. So this is the property, Brian Palalonas, the owner of Pajamadera. It's flooded twice now. You can see that there is an unnamed river stream, Brook becomes a raging river. We do have permission to install a boulder barrier inside the states, right on the state's right-of-way, because we don't want it to become a site that gets utilized for unusual behavior. Thoughts on next steps? I am happy to reach out to the Conservation Commission or any other ideas. It can have plantings, it can have trees.
I think the boulders and let it go back to nature.
Yeah, if you don't know.
Take zero cost to anybody.
Okay.
The only reason I say that is because we don't have the resources to take care of it.
Well, that's why I said trees.
And if we make it nice, people will want to have that.
Well, I did, that's why I did say trees. I mean, I, there is a program I could have attached, I could have gone for trees in Lemoil, but that is on the Lemoil, but this is not on the Lemoil.
I wouldn't be against trees, that is something up there that's...
Just a quick thought, is every spring, the Conservation Commission gets a donation of small trees.
Yeah.
So it doesn't cost us anything anyway.
Oh, I wouldn't be against trees, but I don't think, I think we want to make it unattractive to stop.
Oh, yeah. So it would be like an intraveil planting, which is just like a thicket, basically. It's not like a picnic.
Yeah, no, I wasn't thinking, but I wanted to bring it to you.
It's already being utilized as parking, so you're up to this.
Wait.
It's got one of the few, it's the last spot with Wi-Fi, so people stop there.
I could do it as a parking, I don't know.
Really? On the other side of the road?
No, those roads are right there, like, they live there.
Yeah. I can get out more.
It's no big deal, I'm just saying, it's just another spot that'll be...
Yeah.
So I talked to the Conservation Commission.
Yeah.
Ding. Sorry. This one is, so we have two more on, this is, the picture is of Carey's, Carey Road. And the other one is on School Street in East Hardwick. Again, do you guys, what do you envision? I can talk to East Hardwick neighborhood, I can see if there's anyone over in that area who wants to put gardens in. Right now, they're just green space and they can continue to be green space, but trying to look you guys in.
I think, I think having Eno do the work for East Hardwick totally makes sense if they're willing.
I'm willing, welcome to, I can talk to them.
Yeah.
Okay.
School Street's right, that's very small, isn't it?
It's very small and it has a landslide still. But, but it could have some gardens or a bench or something if they wanted to do that.
I mean, they're not too close to the landslide.
It's not, it's not too close to the landslide, yes.
So these, this one and School Street are not scheduled to have any sort of...
No.
...arbitrator, anything to stop the continued erosion. So that's going to get, that green space is going to get smaller.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. That is one that I've, I've targeted to see if we can do some, like, willows and et cetera. But again, it's, it's a cost and it's not on one of the major areas. So if I find money for that, I will...
So I would say, when we get around to figuring out what we're going to do with the Carey Road box cover, that could be a part of the new box cover, like that area.
Part of that, okay.
Yeah, so I wouldn't put too much money into that site or time.
Oh, I wasn't, yeah, I was saying time, not money.
That could completely change.
Okay, it's okay. The next one is the, that's okay. Okay, so I'm on page five. And that just says, so we have five more that went to, we have, we had six more that went to FEMA. Hold on, let me do, oh, five more that went to FEMA from 2023. So I'm only focusing on 2023. Okay, so you guys are well aware of this one. It's the 41 Brush Street. It is a couple of different things to note.
We didn't tear it down.
Well, stop and listen to me for a second. So it does have its funding from FEMA. There are five properties that FEMA, four came back with funding already, one won in a little later. No, five of them, so five. We have six, sorry. Okay, so the appraisal on the work is being scheduled by the State of Vermont. The NRCS Emergency Watership Program was looking at another property on that street and saw this and said, you know, we could probably put this in the program to protect Brush Street and your pipes and the rest of it. So we don't have the list from back from them yet, but I'm hoping that this will be in there to protect, to further protect what we have for infrastructure there. This would be part of another scoping study that I'm going to talk about a little bit later on number 12. And then it's supposed to be, it has to be waited, we have to wait to demolish it until August 1st because we weren't able to check for bats in it. You are receiving federal money from FEMA to demolish something, you have to check for bats. And because it's unstable, you have to wait until after the breeding season. So this is not coming down by human...
So it's after August 1st right now?
I have a plan to stabilize this quickly. So we don't have to check for bats. Or so it doesn't fall down.
Oh, good, that's true.
Okay.
And the other, the other part of that property, that garage, that goes down with it?
Yes. Everything, when you buy a property, everything goes down. So that, so when we bought School Street, the building was gone, but there were two foundations they had today. Okay, so there's four additional properties that came back with FEMA funding. There are two on Route 14 South on Cooper Brook. I've submitted a pre-application to do a hazard mitigation grant to do floodplain restoration, hoping to help the rest of the properties that are on Route 14. And then there are two more properties that are down on Sawmill Lane. And again, that, there's a mitigation grant for across the river and then a possible location to do a larger restoration project in eventual park. But that's like a five to 10-year. And then there's another property at FEMA waiting for funding that would be contiguous with those. So we have a section, that Sawmill Lane section, everyone in there has been flooded multiple times and they've been asking to be bought out. So this is the first three.
So that's Aneer and two out front?
The, the two out front are not, are, would be 2024. This is 2023, I'm dealing with right now. So these were the first ones that came in.
Which are Aneer and...
Aneer, Devinger, Mascol, the last three. And then the other two would be Judkins, who is still, you know, they want to see what the appraisal...
Is that next to you?
14.
14.
On 14.
So the other two. So Judkins and the old Warner Place.
Yeah, the old Warner Place.
Yeah, because it had been grazed and it was still getting water inside of it.
They actually moved it.
Yeah, they moved it and now they get it. They moved, and it's, it's, I just talked to him yet today. He says that it, it's, the whole thing is, has disintegrated. The water has seeped up into the whole building. But they have their funding back. So you're going to be seeing these purchased and demolished hopefully within the next, by spring.
I think you said this, but where it says possible location of floodplain restoration project in eventual park, that's across the river?
No, that is Sawmill. There's two sides to that. I mean, you have your immediate, the one we've asked for and has river, and I'll go into that. It's the one across the river, not on the Sawmill Lane side. The Sawmill Lane side, because there's multiples who have asked to buy it out in there, eventually, there's going to be a large section there. And if you go down to Northfield, they have Dog River Park.
Yeah, yeah. It was a successful floodplain restoration.
Very successful. And the Calhoun County NRCS, Emily Finnegan, the woman who met for, is willing to take it on, find the funding and is excited about it. But this is, it's something we can't start yet because we don't own the properties and they're all in flux. But it's an eventual project. And I will tell you that when talking to people who live in the Granite Street Historic District, that's the project that really excites them because it really could help with their flooding. Because it's so close to where... Yeah, because it's where Cooper and Lemoil come in. We're trying to think of this holistically the whole time. Ding. So that takes us to Granite Street Historic District. I have a pre-application in for a Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Grant for that area, including Atkins, Cooper Brook, that whole area. This is the sort of thing that would work well with the community. It also might help with accessing other grants. There were minor changes that were identified by the residents that have been implemented, which is, they are ecstatic. Thank you, Danny, for working with Atkins on that, that piece in there. Just a few inches elevation becomes a, becomes a berm in the middle of floods and Dana was able to bring it down to road elevation. They, Atkins Field is really interested in looking at floodplain restoration on Atkins Field because the gardens are probably going to be moving elsewhere at some point because they've been destroyed two years in a row. So instead of creating community through gardening and plantings, maybe creating community through floodplain resilience. It's great. There are about 10-plus houses who want to be flooded. That is one of those things that is kind of elusive, but I'm working on it. The road crew restored the Stormwater Garden over on Claude Street and I've had so many comments on that. Thank you so much, Tom and crew. Those are tiny things, but it's a, it's a starting point, you know? Sometimes when we don't have the money to start things, we need to do the smaller things that we can. The next one is floodplain elevations. We had several people who requested. We just received a pre-award letter from the State of Vermont for $700,000. One of five towns in the State of Vermont.
For $700,000?
Thousand.
For, from where?
Elevations.
For residents?
Residents.
Residents, elevating. Okay, yeah.
We don't know all the particulars. We don't, we're still gathering who's going to, how it's going to work and who's going to be eligible.
So that would be what, so what Steve Fairland elevated his property, so it's out of the highway?
Yeah, yeah.
That's the one on 14 South that worked.
Yeah, but you see, he did it right after the flood.
Yeah, yeah.
So this is, I don't have who it is yet. You'll get more information as we get more information. But we were one of five towns identified in the State of Vermont as needing something along this line. It was targeted for elevations. It wasn't, I didn't, it's not as though I could have say, I am going to ask him if we can do floodproofing with it. But it's similar.
I can see where the floodplain elevations, to me, seems to be not necessarily a really good answer. Because if they're elevated, they've did a floodplain and they're elevating their property, we know that it's causing water to be displaced somewhere else.
Exactly.
You don't always, nature doesn't always put things where you plan on going. So there must be a fair amount of risk to that. I mean, certainly what Steve did is going to affect where the old Warner property.
Yeah.
You know? And now that actually affects the Dragon property.
Dragon is also elevated already.
But you know what I'm saying?
I do know what you're saying. So this is, part of it is engineering and looking at how it's going to impact everyone around you. Yes, elevations do impact other people.
Because actually, everybody says, well, this raised my land, well...
Yeah, we're trying, we're also trying to keep, I mean, we have people who have asked to be bought out and that's worked wonderfully, but then other people who do not want to be bought out. So we're trying to work with everybody. But this was a not, we didn't put an application or anything. It just, it was one of the, it was an allocation from the state.
There was some whining on our end.
I whined a few times, just a few times. I'm a little tenacious. This is, there was an Economic Development Administration Grant, EDA, that is going to be doing flood modeling for the Lemoil River and Cooper Brook, which is great. They already have the money. The work is going to be done by the end of December 2025. The exciting thing with this is that not only will we get the flood modeling, which we need for all these other projects, it's changed with all these floods, but also we will be getting, three to five possible mitigation projects could be created. For example, if we wanted to look at East Hardwick's bridge that goes over and seeing if it, if a different size would be better, et cetera. I mean, there's, there's things that can happen. It's working with, we don't have a lot of complete control over it. It's working with NBDA, they get the final word on this. But I'm going to, I've already been part of this from the Lemoil County Planning Commission side, so I'm going to stay with it. The other part of this money is economic... The other part of this money is economic development in the floodplain. Still working with NVDA to find out what that entails, but hopefully that's going to mean we can help for floodproofing for some of the businesses that are already down there.
So river modeling, so that's what, what that's going to tell us is like just, when you head up 14th South, you can see where the gravel and the river is literally eight feet higher than it used to be.
Yep.
So that'll tell us that.
Yep.
Because they'll basically go back to their old models, say it was elevation was such a situation.
So we'll get information on that, which actually could be utilized if we wanted to look at dredging in the future or if we wanted to, they also can do better base flood elevations for us in our Granite Street Historic District because there's a little bit of discrepancy with the new maps. I don't think they're right, but I also don't have $200,000 to hire someone to do it. They can take a look at that and see as part of their work. I don't know if they're going to be able to do that. It's something I've asked for. It's exciting because it's money that's already been coming in and it's going to give another ground base layer for us.
Kristen, will that, study also make recommendations?
It can, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Actually, what they asked for, for a deliverable with this was the, do you remember the seven-page report I gave you guys a while ago, which you're going to get a new version of? That, they took that report and they gave it, they put it out with bids and said, this is what we want you to create for each of our towns on Lemoyle. So we're ahead of the game. How's that?
Kristen, is there a coordinate, and this is not, this, what I'm about to ask you is not your job, so if you don't have an answer, I totally understand. But is there, is the state coordinating these efforts from town to town?
No.
Because this is something I'm?
So a lot of towns don't have all this.
Well, no, that's not even really my question. My question is the armoring and the changes that are made upstream and downstream affect each community differently. So like the work that the state just did in East Hardwick is, I'm not a water, I'm not an engineer, so, but it's going to have an effect on us and then it's going to have an effect on Morseville and Johnson and all the way to Champlain. So I think it's amazing what Hardwick is doing. So there's, to your knowledge, there's not like a?
No, there isn't. So basically it usually goes by your?
There's certainly, there's some coordination.
The planning commissions in some of the areas are stepping up and taking on a lot of this stuff.
Well, I know NVDA is doing a lot, but NVDA only goes so far in Lemoyle.
So Lemoyle, so Lemoyle River has broken up into three, three basins. You have your middle that goes to Jackson Dam in Hardwick and that's covered by the Lemoyle County Planning Commission. Your upper is covered by NVDA and it goes from Jackson up to the headwaters in Greensboro. So they only have a tiny section. NVDA has seven tactical basins in their, in their coverage, two of which are completely immersed. So those are the ones they're focused on because that's, they have seven. The one county has one. They have understood that things that happen upstream impact downstream, which is why they invited me to come and start coming to their meetings and they included in this grant Hardwick. But for example, the grant specified that it was only going to go to Jackson Dam. I've asked them to go to the edge of Hardwick because we've got some more projects we could look at and hopefully they will. And adding Cooper in is above Jackson. But it's, it's hard because they, everyone, the way that it's supposed to work is your RPC gets, is supposed to put together, work together with everybody to know what's going on. We have two RPCs on the same river. There's two tactical basins, there's two clean water people, et cetera. So we're trying to navigate that. As far as like anything the state does, anything ETRAN does that doesn't get reviewed by the river corridor, the river engineers that I work with. In fact, when that project was bid out, I didn't even know it was happening and my river engineer didn't know it was happening. So they are not, that's not part of their equation. They're trying to protect their infrastructure.
The state is still very much in triage mode from these last two summers of flooding and the other events that they've experienced in between, like the one over in St. Johnsbury area, and they're also still experiencing mass exits.
You mean river flooding?
Yeah.
So the Department of Riverfront Conservation doesn't, does not exist anymore?
Well?
D E C?
No, no, no.
So D E C doesn't do any of the ones for ETRANs?
But ETRANs is, is still just doing their own thing and they're not like, and I don't know about anything. So they're, they can't figure out how to operate.
Okay. That explains like randomly seeing excavators in the river.
Yeah.
Skitters and tractors and everything else down here. Being a bigger mess than they made.
Yeah.
It's just a part, and I know this, like there's nothing we can necessarily control about this, but it's certainly a frustration of having, understanding, needing the triage or needing to have, you know, keep roads safe, keep people safe, but then also this, lows are going to directly affect our?
Which is why I'm scrambling to do some floodplain restoration. Hopefully help us.
Yeah, but unfortunately, that's kind of, what you're saying is part of the problem is because we're doing stuff that's going to affect other people down the river.
Actually, the restoration projects, we don't have almost any armoring projects except for two.
Right, so I'm not, I understand, I don't?
We're trying to stay away from armoring.
But armor, so I don't want to stay away from armor.
No, but we, well, we have to armor in the middle of town.
I'm not an anti-armor guy. I'm an armor guy, just so you know. I don't lose infrastructure for the sake of letting them wash downstream. I armor.
Right.
I understand floodplains as well, but what I don't, I'm just having a hard time believing that, that the state of Vermont doesn't keep track of these projects as well.
Hey, Vermont emergency management is.
They're keeping track of it, but they're not keeping track of how people have?
And I'm not saying, you know, this is negative, but I'm just saying, in the grand scheme of things, if, if projects affect other areas and we're the leader in the project, we're contributing to a lot of other people's problems, right?
Or changes.
Or changes, yeah. Changes over that. But I'm just saying, I honestly have the assumption that coordination through the state of Vermont when you're in Vermont's water was?
So one of the things they're talking about, Danny, is looking at it from a regional point of view or a watershed point of view. I have weighed in and said, I think the watershed point of view would be great personally. I mean, that's just my own. I didn't speak for the town of Hardwick. I said, you know, I'm experiencing and seeing a watershed approach.
Well, I mean, that, if you're going to break it down, that would be the way to do it.
And that is, that is why the state has, is going to do with the corridor rules eventually along from the state because every town is different.
I mean, I think the bottom line is, is everybody's behind the eight ball.
Yep. There is, there's, there's something that happened in Greensboro that has impacted properties in Hardwick partially. And, you know, I can't do anything about that. I wouldn't help them do their, their bylaws. Hopefully they'll, we're just into speed. We're doing the best we can.
Yeah.
But we're looking, and that's why we're looking at floodplain restoration and floodplain mitigation versus just buying, just armoring.
Right.
Because in the grand scheme, hopefully we'll become more flood resilient.
I think we're doing, we, you all are doing exactly the right thing. I just always think about how like we're putting in a lot of time and effort to do it right and then we're also seeing it just being, just being band-aided. And that is really hard to, you know, and that makes sense, but it's just because it's water. It's really tricky and so it's just?
We're doing the best we can. There is a project that is in, could be in Hardwick that would benefit Woca. I matched the river conservancy people with the person who would help do that. So, you know, I mean, it's, it's being cognizant of it. I think if we keep being cognizant of it, you don't like the time, do you, Danny? Okay, so resilient, next one. Okay, we're on 12 and there's 13. Okay. So River is the resilience initiative for Vermont empowerment and recovery. It was funding that was obtained by the Two Rivers Regional Planning Commission and it targeted certain towns. Hardwick was one of them. Basically, they are, they retained a engineering and consulting firm, Stamtech. You guys heard from them. They came and talked to you and said, we're going to be helping you with something. Well, the something is going to be three projects. One, the mill street above town. The second is going to be lower, what you see across the river there where HED, I believe is the official owner, but that's?
The town is the official owner.
The town, okay. It's a, it's a floodplain restoration project that has been identified in multiple studies of the river. And the hope is that because it's just below where Cooper is, it will help with floodplain mitigation. And then the final would be the scoping study for protecting and restoring the Lemoyle River from haze, approximately haze to cottage, because we have, we might have FEMA funds and EWP funds and the rest of it, but we really need to know what needs to happen in there. So scoping the whole thing so we don't inadvertently have one person hurting another person. So kind of on a micro scale of what you're talking about, Kaylee. And we just heard this morning that those are the three they're going to focus on. To give you an idea, Kaylee, we're talking about all the armoring you need to do in downtown Hardwick. They came up with a $2.5 million price tag to do that. So the scoping study would be the first.
Which is what?
Yeah, that seems actually like not that crazy.
Yeah. Just some additional information for you guys. Thank you so much for facilitating the bylaws update for floodplain. It was, it went really well and we're the only town ready for the updated FEMA maps. And actually was able to, you'll see the implications with the presentation on the wastewater treatment facility. About the FEMA maps, they are still in early working draft, which means I can't release them, but I have been letting people know that they should think about flood insurance maybe if they go forward as the way they're written. They'll be ready in about a year or two and then everyone who is impacted will get a personal note, like a letter from me saying, this is what's going to happen. Come talk to me, et cetera.
We will show you the maps for a nominal price.
No. Once I can show them to people, I'm going to put a map all the way. The local emergency management plan is under review and we're looking at making it more accessible. And at the same time, Neighbor to Neighbor is working with consultants that were hired by Vermont Council of Rural Development to create a citizen version of Hardwick's local emergency plan. So helping with communications, embedding a volunteer, for example, in the town so that we can get communications that are smooth and, and help us out and the supply and support center, emergency shelter, volunteers, et cetera. So they're expecting a draft in early 2025 and they'll be inviting everyone in the community to come out and, and hear about it and to volunteer their time maybe in a future emergency. So that's just your heads up. Bye.
Thanks so much, Kristen.
I'm coming back and I'm on another time.
Thank you. Appreciate the, even though it's high level, it's actually fairly detailed.
Well, there's more stuff, but that's, that's your basic for now.
So we need to, great. Next up, we have, and one's left for to review, two of the current licensees for M and M beverage is here.
I make a motion that we approve the second class license for M U beverage, student business M and M beverage and a tobacco license and a tobacco substitute endorsement for the same.
Do that second.
Can second that?
Questions? The tongue just noted that the review wasn't having questions. All in favor of approving those licenses, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Most carries, thank you. Next, we have Jason here from Aldridge and Elliot to talk to us about the report on the wastewater treatment facility, which as Danny noted previously is 176 pages and?
Yeah, you have to go through page by page.
No, no, I did that already.
You did?
Very fast.
Well, it was ready before.
But I did read the apart pages. I like those long stories that have a one page.
Yeah.
So I just want to kind of get the high points. I think everybody's familiar with the plant enough and what's happened there over the past year plus and during two 500-year floods and wiping out the plant, plant essentially. So we've been working on this for about a year now, a little under a year. And the overall goal here is to provide this report, looking at essentially three alternatives for the wastewater treatment facility so that FEMA can do a cost benefit analysis and determine whether they can offer funding for plant either rehabilitation essentially or replacement. And so I just want to talk through a couple of those, those alternatives. So in both of the floods that happened almost to the day, a year apart, July 2023, July 2024, the floodwaters exceeded the 500-year flood elevation at the plant. The first flood in '23, we were under construction doing an upgrade and we lost not only existing infrastructure, but also brand new infrastructure that had already been installed by the project. Luckily, we had a contractor on site and were able to react pretty quickly to get a lot of that stuff repaired. We thought we were in good shape and then a year later it happened again and we lost all of the new equipment and the old equipment that was repaired. Fortunately, things are running again. In the evaluation, so there's a couple of key points. Looking at what the design flood elevation is for the project, there's a couple of different ways to evaluate this and one is base flood elevation plus three, from one foot above the 500-year flood elevation. And looking at that evaluation, the base flood elevation plus three feet governs for that particular site. So that means, and this doesn't really give you much context in and of itself, but the base flood elevation, the design flood elevation is 800, 805.3 feet at that site. So to put that into context, the finished floor of the control building, which is essentially at grade down there, is at elevation 797. So you're 7.25 feet below what your design elevation is actually supposed to be. And that's about what the flood elevation, flood levels were down there at the plant. So going a little bit further and tagging on a little bit to what Kristen had indicated, with the local flood bylaws, that's critical infrastructure and it actually can't be replaced. So in, in that, in that location. So essentially something needs to be done. It either needs to be raised or it needs to be relocated.
Yeah.
Yes. Just want to make sure.
It can be.
Yes, yes. Dry flood. So that, so what we looked at in this evaluation is bringing the plant back to pre-disaster condition. And that's, that's a baseline condition that FEMA needs to look at to do their overall lifecycle costs and determine what they can offer you to do the next phase, which would be either alternative two, which is codes and standards, which is bringing the plant up to codes and standards, we'll talk about that in a second, or complete relocation. Roughly, the pre-disaster condition is about a million, a little over a million dollars, 1.1 million, 1.1 million to bring the plant back to pre-disaster conditions. That is not totally what you've spent on the pre-disaster condition concurrently to get things back up and running. It includes a couple of items that would need to be done that just weren't done because it wasn't feasible. We're able to incorporate those in the pre-disaster condition for an evaluation later on. Under the current codes and standards, that alternative looks at basically demolishing the plant in place down to the existing slab, leaving the in-plant pump station, which is in the basement, building floodproof, dry floodproofing above the influent pumps, pump station and the headworks that's currently exterior to the building. So dry floodproofing that area, having another dry floodproof section with a flow-through path in between at floor level and then moving the electronics, the control, the, the office, the lab and the blowers up to the second floor. So basically where the roof is now would be where all of the critical infrastructure is for the wastewater plant with an access off to the, basically lagoon number one on the backside. The phosphorus chemical building, if you're familiar with the plant and you're looking from Woca Street down, that's the small building that's up on the left-hand side, that's above your designed flood elevation. The lagoons are above your designed flood elevation. So those are, so that's a sort of a safe zone for the wastewater plant. So codes and standards, again, bringing everything up to basically roof elevation. That, that alternative in our review, total project cost that we're projecting out to 2027 is about $8.4 million to do that effort at the plant. The complete facility relocation, we look at demolishing, essentially demolishing the entire existing plant. Chlorine contact tank, which would be demolished, the plant in and of itself, the building Chlorine contact tank, which would be demolished, the plant in and of itself, the building would be demolished. The, a new wastewater treatment facility would be constructed in one of the lagoons. And then the other lagoon, once the new plant is up and running, would be, there's options, but the ideal situation would be to return that back to, restore that back to floodplain. So you'd have essentially one lagoon, which is over an acre. I can't remember the exact size of each acre, but you'd have that returned back to floodplain. That alternative, again, we're projecting out, this one's a little bit further out to 2027. That's a big one. That's at about $21 million for that alternative. What that incorporates also is the demolition of each of the lagoons and restoration.
It's gonna cost us $3 million to take out the lagoons. We just barely paid $7 million for that.
That's right. There's a significant effort to demolish those lagoons.
So that, we're changing the type of plant.
You would be at that point.
The process is a different process.
So, so not necessarily incorporated in this report, but what is a tremendous benefit for you as a community right now. Your plant has, you, for the past 10 or so, maybe more years, the loadings into that plant are very high. The BOD, the biochemical oxygen, the van loading are very high coming into that plant. And so you're tight on capacity for expansion. And that's always been an issue. And, and there's been mitigation and you've been able to control it. Some of that has to do, I think, in not, not anything bad or right or wrong. It has to do with what's coming in, I think, partially from the industrial part and other large users, which is, is okay, but it constrains you on what you could do there with the type of lagoon plant that you have. With, with a replacement and a change of system, you have way more flexibility and the ability to control and treat that higher loading much better. That's not necessarily saying that you, that doesn't, that's not a total deciding factor for you to go that route. But when you say a change of, of treatment process, yes, it does also provide you more flexibility.
Yeah. Which, so at least three of us are better out quite a while. So we, we understand that we're, we've had issues before with the thoughts of more capacity and having to require people to do pre-treatment.
Exactly.
Things of that nature.
Right.
So the future is not, capacity wise, is not very bright with our existing.
And not to mention new testing.
Which we always knew, but we, we were fixing what we had because we couldn't afford on our own dime.
That's correct.
To change. So what I'm hearing, and I don't know if I should say it out loud, is this may be an opportunity for us to lessen the blow to our ratepayers.
That's correct.
To go with a, a system that will be ultimately much better for the future of Hardwick.
Flexibility long-term.
Yeah. Something that will have to be done anyway at some point if we expect to grow.
Especially when sludge is getting harder and harder to.
Right. That's the other thing. Getting rid of the sludge is.
Sludge is killer.
We already know, we just doubled that.
That would be a good, a good number to add on. So if we went with eight million option.
Right. We still gotta have five million every, every three years to get rid of sludge. Or honestly, I guess there will always be a place to get rid of it, but it's getting, we know how difficult.
Well, there is, but that's getting harder and harder. That's, that's the issue that we ran into with the treatment plant upgrade we just did was disposal. Can't get, can't get rid of it.
Oh yeah, we're well, well aware of that.
And that was, that was killer. You know, so that was a quick overview. I burned through things pretty quick. Certainly happy to answer questions, but not really, we're not looking, there's no, there's no decisions to make. We're not, there's no, you know, yes, we want to go with this alternative or this alternative. This has been finalized and it has to go to FEMA now. And they do their analysis and they basically are gonna come back to you with an offer. And then that offer is gonna be some, some number of dollars that's gonna help you make a decision about what path you want to go down. In addition to that, there's a potential for additional funding from the state to go on top of that, which I can't say what that is. We don't, they don't even know what that is. But, so this is really just an exercise so that you can get an offer from FEMA. It's not a decision-making point for you at this, at this time. I think that in our, in our analysis, initially when we were going through this, we felt like that alternative number two, the codes and standards, was the best bet for your plant until the second flood happened. And then we were like, why are we all looking at this again? Because it's gonna happen again.
So we can't deny it's gonna happen again. That's the issue now.
Questions? So you just, I think, just said that going with the, the batch reactor.
So much of that. The relocation.
The relocation provides more flexibility for increased.
Nutrient load.
Yeah, that's right. But I thought in the report, it said that you were designing the same levels.
So it'd be the same, you can, you can increase capacity. So what we had to look at in this report was replacement income.
Yeah.
But what the, what the plant essentially in here is the same capacity as you have now. So you have 341 gallons a day or something like that.
371.
371 gallons per day. But with the SBR, you have much more operational flexibility to handle higher loadings. Even at the same, even at the same capacity.
So with the same physical infrastructure, you could change your process to do more?
You, you, yes, you have more flexibility. Yep.
Okay. And then my, my second question was, I understand, you know, this is for FEMA, but when it does come around to town decisions and if we are deciding between.
Yes.
Options two and three, changing the process, I assume changes the operating expense.
It would.
And how do we, is there a point at which we model that?
Yes, absolutely. And so, um, once there's an alternative, once we get sort of an offer and we have more information, we're gonna have to figure out where this sits with the state. If there's state funding and funding involved, we're gonna have to do a little bit of a deeper analysis, alternatives analysis for them, for their approval on each one of these alternatives. At that point, we can, we would have to look at for them what the O M cost would be. If, if that, if they're not gonna require that for this particular process, we're not really sure how this is gonna play out. I'm not sure if it's gonna go down a traditional state revolving loan fund path like we did with the wastewater plant upgrade we just went through. Things could be a little bit different with this process with FEMA involved. And even if the state has some funding, it could be quicker, it could be simpler to some degree. We can still do an evaluation for you to make a decision on which avenue you want to go down before you make that, that ultimate call.
I mean, definitely the idea of getting rid of lagoon number one and lowering that and then potentially working with the trans-rail division to get an underpass under the rail trail. You could definitely envision how that would really help.
All, all those businesses down there.
It would, it would just be. And you open up a lot of floodplain space right now. It's, it's a venture.
Yeah.
Yeah, specifically Black Ridge as well over on the other side would be a huge change, game changer for flooding. And that, you know.
It's a great report.
Yeah.
Did, yeah.
So is it, is it, it's off to FEMA or it's going out to FEMA? It's gone.
So the three, Johnson, Lamo and Hardwick are all being kind of stumped by the consult, state consultant.
Yep. And they, they have it. They're bringing it to FEMA. I'm not sure, I'm not sure how long it's gonna take. Could be, could be till the end of the year.
Yeah, I mean, you got some other things going on right now.
So there has been a local, the FEMA, FEMA representative that's reviewing these and going to be doing the cost analysis is a former UVM Hydraulics Professor. He lives over in, in, near, just south of St. John's Berry. He's been around for years and we know him pretty well, Richard Downer. So we'll be in touch with him, working through that analysis to go through that with him. I'm sure he's gonna have questions on it. But he's already been assigned to it, which bodes well for it moving forward, hopefully. But I don't know that we really have a good timeline on it. Dave, you might know more than I do.
Well, we've done it, right?
I think we'll have nothing on that in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah. So one other thing that I think can really accelerate the timeframe before this, once we get an offer from FEMA, is they and the state are both on board with a design build. So a designed bid build. So that's a huge benefit time-wise. And that's how we based the cost was on a designed build, not a designed bid build. Because it's a, that's a huge time saver to be able to do that. And so that's been okay by FEMA and the state to be able to do that with these particular projects.
That would, that would be huge.
Yeah. Either way, even if it's codes and standards or replacement, either way, huge, huge time savings.
I think with all the talk of resiliency and everything else, that they would want us to move it into the future.
Let me think. As previously discussed, we're not even looking at the whole of oil rigs.
Right. So, yeah.
Thank you, Jason.
Yeah.
Really appreciate it. And the detail on the report is really good.
Yeah, absolutely. If anything comes up, if you have any other questions, let me know.
Great. All right. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was wondering, what happened in the fall of 2022? In the fall of 2022, there's a weak spike here. How about you, Danny? We don't need to do a drink.
Oh, yeah.
You didn't read it? Yeah, we're talking about the stop, do red, do red.
I think that's when we transferred over to London.
Hey, thanks for coming, Danny.
So there's also a cigarette. All right.
A lot of that had to do with.
Main Street, Main Street, discussed the last three meetings. Deb?
What do you want to do, Danny? You wanna pay $6,000 for, for the paint on the home we have?
Oh my God, we're to this one again.
Hey, you guys asked for it.
I, I didn't want.
1600.
So to be clear, it says just white lines, but this is a.
This is the width, the, what you asked for.
Three feet or whatever.
Yeah.
Is it striped?
It is striped, yes.
Crosshatched.
Crosshatched.
And it's, as you can see, $6,875,000. Opie and I also talked about the flexible round post. We just found one online that is able to screw into the ground, just to give you guys an estimate. And we kind of estimated 39 of those posts every 50 feet. And so we would be ordering 39 at $41 apiece, which equals to $1,599. He and I talked about doing those posts. We've also talked about doing those posts and still painting a white line just for even more of a buffer. So we have more options, but I think the, I mean, I think the flexible posts probably will be cheaper and might even be safer for the kids. But at least we've got the quotes from this company, different, different quotes from the last few meetings. And so we have options for that section.
And I don't know about the posts in the winter. That's the only thing.
Well, I absolutely know about them.
Me too.
I know where they're gonna be.
But it's just a thought to delineate, but we're trying, we're coming up with all of the potentials, possibilities here and feeding it to you guys.
Are these easy, are these, the posts, can they be taken, taken off for the winter? I assume they'd be like pretty easy.
I don't, I don't want to leave them out. They'll just get destroyed.
Yeah. One of the questions at the last meeting we asked was if we do any of these, where are the monies coming from? Do we figure that out?
We have to budget.
We have to budget.
We got the budget for it. We don't have any budget.
Well, we have sidewalk.
That's true.
Well, I, I don't have the mind. If we're not gonna do anything until next spring, then we don't need to worry about it right now.
I agree.
Just step up.
Yeah, I mean, we found that it's gonna be more difficult to, a difficult subject to deal with, what we determined.
Well, we really need to be able to sidewalk.
We just got 21 million.
I know, but it works every day.
Well, I wanted to say.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's not.
Real sidewalk would be ideal.
But, but still, we've come up with, it's not, it's not a cheap, easy fix.
Zero.
So we, knowing this, we can add something in for next year's budget? Is that what you're saying? Or do something in the spring?
Consider it.
At this point, I think we need to have a budget line item for South Main Street. With an action item to be done in next year's budget, it's gonna have to be more than $5,000.
Or have we done a transportation alternative grant for that stretch of road ever, FEMA?
Don't know. It's class one, so I don't know whether you'd be able to get.
Well, we just got on Main Street. So we could put in another application for a transportation alternative grant near next.
Yeah.
So that's the way to do it. That's the best way to do it.
And then, and we may, and when we get done with item number four, we may think we need to decide which, which road we're doing there.
Let's get there.
For first.
What we're doing in her.
I wasn't trying to do that.
No, I know you're not.
This is just information to you guys.
No, that's all good. It's all good.
So when we did the South Main Street.
Incrementally, we, in my opinion, before we move on from this one, is we need to, if we're gonna do something to be productive and we could do that on a much cheaper dime, is to come up with a genuine plan.
Yeah.
To do what we're gonna do. Are we going, you know? And, and so at least at that point, we can get small grants over five years to do, work our way towards Jenny Road.
Yeah.
So at least if we do the United Church intersection, do one section of sidewalk with a crosswalk, with, you know what I'm saying? But we can't do any of that until we have some sort of plan in how we're going to make those crosswalks work. How, what kind of sidewalk are we gonna have on the left-hand side? I mean, that's gotta be dealt with. Painting a white line for one year is not gonna resolve any of this. It's gonna help, but it's not, we're still lacking a South Main Street plan for pedestrian use. A legit ADA approved.
Right.
Drawings. You know, that's something that needs to be done in order for us, at that point, we can say, well, now we'll do this project this year. We'll do this project this year. But at least we, we know what A, B, and C is. And right now, we don't. We just know that we're not anywhere near.
So right now, we're doing a.
I hate planning. I'm an anti-planning guy.
I know. You're over there talking about it. My God.
I must get it bad.
So we're doing it on Main Street right now, right? So we have a project underway or get Main Street again for the same.
The same stuff.
Same stuff.
Yeah.
And so I'm thinking what we need to do is we need to get a plan together where we look at.
Well, I think that's something we can do, right?
Yeah.
That's something we should be doing as a.
We should be doing is we should say, let's, Main Street's going, when that, when that is planned and, and that's moving forward, then the next thing to plan is either South Main or perhaps.
Well, it doesn't matter because it all needs it.
Exactly.
But we need to start being due diligence about getting these things done.
And this stuff needs to be in the capital plan. That's something I want to work on. What's something we're gonna work on when we can get out of this flood recovery stuff?
We can basically just replicate what we have for our paving plan and use it for sidewalks. So that way, it just works really well to be like, okay, we know we're doing Cedar Street, whatever.
Yeah.
Except that.
It's pretty basic.
Well, except that for, I think it's a little different because paving is our own money. And we're gonna go to roads.
I'm just saying, concept wise, like this is number one safety priority. This is number two, three, four, whatever, like putting it all on, putting it all on paper so we know.
But we need actual designs because the infrastructure that we have needs to be changed.
Yeah.
Keep track. It's very simple. Yeah. It's just a tracking thing.
Kristen.
And with all of them, you'd have to look at stormwater to, for the change.
Yep.
Well, yeah, everything. But that's what I'm saying.
I think a good example, uh, something to pay attention to is the, what's going on in East Hardwick right now? Better connection stuff? Because they're developing a plan to make the conditions better up there. They're gonna get a stormwater system design out of that. And we'll see the next phase of that, the implementation of that plan. So that's, that's a prime example of what needs to happen in snapshots all over town.
Yep. And that's true. Yeah, and that's through better connections, right?
That's the particular one.
That's out there.
Yeah. Yeah, great. So I think we should roll right into item four, Kristen's gonna talk about
Which is your, I'm just, no, I'm not, I wasn't planning to talk about it.
I would also, um, say that if you can attend one of those better connection community meetings, I think it's important. I, I attended one, I think Kaylee was at the one I attended. It's good to show up and see what it's all about.
Great. Uh, I have someone I know about them.
Jordan, you know me almost.
Oh, boy.
Well, they, we've been told, I mean
Yeah, we'll let you know.
Basically, send out a, a, to the select board when they are.
And they're, they're, they're out there.
Here, we just sent it to the whole select board, yeah. Oh, boy. Alright, so
So what I will remind you guys, all of these programs have started with one of these walk audits. We've been able to take the walk audit and use it to leverage getting funding to do the transportation alternatives, better connections, et cetera. So this is a, this is a, something that you're having done by volunteers that's becoming the first step to grow forward. So it'll be great to see it happening on South Main Street, Wilkens structure.
So some people walked on Wilkens Street.
Yes, Wilkens Street.
Some people from the planning commission.
Yes, so people from the planning commission.
Well, and it's, it's starting with some complaints, which is how South Main Street started as well. People said some things to the town manager's office, town manager's office asked us, and we should look at, at the street, at the sidewalk. Um, I'm not gonna go through this piece by piece, but I will point out to you, as anyone who has walked on Wilkens would know, that there's a section between Elm Street and Main Street that is, um, we identified it at the end. Those planning commissions have been, have been funded in, as the section identified between Elm Street and Main Street, should be studied and approved as soon as physically possible. It is a two and a half foot drop. And it is not enough space for two people and
So I think we all know.
So, yeah.
I, I didn't think I needed to go into it.
Yeah, this comment doesn't, hopefully doesn't come off really, really bad, but one of the issues I see is we keep identifying more problems and we've not we need to
So I think what we need to focus on in all this and what's important
Cause now we got from South Main, now Wilkens is a priority all of a sudden.
No, 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 I think, no, but I think we just need to start cycling through, right? And do the same, whatever we're doing on Mill Street or perhaps the, instead of doing transportation alternatives, maybe we're doing better connections, whatever. We need to do something to get the ball rolling
Yeah.
for making a plan.
And Wilkens Street was, it was a request of, of, of citizens and residents to look at it. And it was also, Wilkens is where we have a lot of our flood planning. And so we need to be looking at, is there other, other, other issues that when we're looking at flood resilience, they should be examined? So it's all dubbed up.
And when we're weighing all the options for where resources are, Wilkens Street, big chunk of it, all the way down to Granite, is in the designated downtown, which gives us an extra point on some of these things that we want to try to get funding for.
South Main Street, that helps.
Yeah.
Ready to play.
It's hard to, um, the, the way I look at it is I'm, I'm very protective of the town, okay? So it's hard, you get defensive with this stuff. It's like, oh, there's, there are problems, there are problems, there are problems, but we need to work towards solutions and they're, they're not an overnight fix. Like, we're just, it's good that we have volunteers, the planning commission that'll go out there and look at this stuff, put, put a report together, Kristen helps with that, and then we just, we, we keep moving forward and staying positive. It's, and these are the conditions on the ground, you know, and they don't change overnight. So it's, it's real easy to get defensive and say, well, there's no problem. It's been like that forever. We're gonna continue to have it be like that. That's not a good attitude to have or a good mindset for a community. That's speaking from my experience and my, and how I look at it.
Right, and I think, I think what everybody is saying tonight is let's, let's figure out how we move forward, type real long-term solutions.
Yeah.
And, and put together a
And they're all tied, and they're all tied together, which is what makes it that much more
Yeah.
complicated.
And just so you guys get a chance to look at it, it is becoming a de facto, um, mile rail trail loop.
So that was one of my questions, and I think this is tied, tied into the kiosks and the signage. So I texted Opie about this, but Grace Rowben just finished their, uh, parking and their little park. And it's beautiful and it's simple, and there's an actual map that shows you where to go. There's zero signage in Harvick about how to get into town and how to get out of town. And so of course it's de facto because it's downhill. So most people are gonna want to go downhill versus going back uphill to the rail trail. But I think that's like, we don't even, I know we've started to put some signage up for parking, but driving into town pretending you don't live here is like, you really don't know where you're going. Um, so I think that is probably the cheapest thing we can do about, I mean, people are gonna do whatever they're gonna do. They're gonna cross the road in the middle of the blinking light to get to front seat, whether we put a crosswalk there or signs or whatever, they're just gonna do it. But, um, I just, I just think we have, we have kiosks, we have set, we're going to be getting, we've got those great maps that were already made. Like, it seems like that's a pretty easy thing that we can do to just start rebuilding.
It's meant to just be a, just a heads up, that is what's
Oh, yeah.
And it is, I mean, it makes total sense.
Oh, yeah.
When I'm downtown, I like going that way. I take the road because that's where I am. I don't like that stuff like that.
Yeah. Um, the other piece that you guys got, and, um, I'm just gonna, I'm not gonna run through it, is the planning commission is looking at creating a new district, which is the Village Center District. It would be in East Harvick. Currently, East Harvick is in the same district as downtown Harvick. And so there are things that could be improved in downtown Harvick that would negatively impact East Harvick because it's a different, it's a completely different area. It doesn't have the, the same shops and commercial that we do in downtown. But if you make a change in the, in the central business, which is what they currently are, you would be, um, you'd be impacting the one in East Harvick as well.
You mean the town and the zoning.
The zoning, the zoning district.
Yeah.
The, and the zoning district was create, was, when they were assigned to that district because there are a lot of their lots are similar to the lots in downtown Harvick. Different, use similar sized lots. So instead of trying to shove, jam them into lots that, into zoning districts that exist, the recommendation was that we create a new district. It's patterned on, um, plans from the state. And it will be, it's in the draft form right now. We're gonna be reaching out with individual letters to each member of the, of that community as to what they're, because there's three different districts there, so there's three different types of changes that will be occurring. Um, so you've got a proposed map and a proposed district description in your packets. It's a heads up, okay? Someone says to you, what is this? Um, and the planning commission will be hosting a public listening, public hearing in December, December tenth, I think, the second Tuesday of the month. Um, so that's heads up.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Which is also coming out with better connections. So it's all dealt together.
Great.
I think it'll be easier to sell a village of East Harvick after this is done.
Oh, boy.
I don't think you can do that.
Um, next is item five, uh, select board to set a public hearing date for the closeout of the B C D P library agreement.
Casey asked that, um, you guys hold the public hearing before the next select board meeting, which is November seventh at either five thirty or five forty five.
Five forty five.
Could be a five, only five.
I said definitely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or a five, a five fifty five.
Yeah.
Well, five forty five, as long as there's cookies.
Love those cookies. And that's for the big rat they just got, or this is for a different one?
They've had it for a while. I didn't realize we had to have a full hearing for closeout of B C D P.
Yeah.
Fair. Alright.
I can tell you.
We could do it.
Good enough. So we may have a yellow wire coming up to that, right? Um, next is item six, select board to review and approve the contractors' emergency water set protection work. This, uh,
Where are these projects at here?
N R C S.
Yeah, no, where are they? There are two projects.
Uh, Heart of Building Supply property, Jerome.
Yep.
And, and Oakus.
And it's to sta, just to stabilize the existing, or are they gonna give back some land to you?
Just armor.
Armor.
Yeah. And rerouting the river channel temporarily, pulling some gravel back.
Yeah.
Making some
But they're not trying to reclaim any of the land, basically, of any, whatever they're gonna do is just get it to work.
Taking down a couple of trees.
So the thing is, we are paying for it.
So no, but we're, we're in control of
Right, that was the deal. We'd do it if we did just
But the, but the homeowner pays a percent.
I make a motion.
So the, the N R C S is paying a hundred percent of these.
Oh, okay, that's
The next group, a little
Oh, okay.
I make a motion that we award the, um, E W P work to G W Tatro Construction for a hundred and thirty eight thousand five hundred.
Seven, thank you. Any discussion? I'm just surprised that the variance
So I'm not at all, because these guys are just throwing numbers out there now because
They got work.
They got plenty of work.
Okay.
Yeah, if you're, at the state, that's, it's a big problem right now. There's people that are making a lot of money right now.
That's very good. Quite, that's much part of our most good. Alright, so we've got a motion, a second, any more discussion? Call them favorite, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Next, uh, select board reports.
I have one.
Isn't this the second?
Hey, I got two reports, yeah.
Okay.
The glasses in the window at the new building.
Helping out any worse.
It's a side ride.
There's no more flyover, there's no more flyover out the window.
Your building down there.
The Eric Remick building.
That's unknown to most people. Is this known to most people, Eric, the Eric Remick building?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, but I did see the glasses.
Yeah.
Small things. Um, no, uh, VASSA, the A T V Association, uh, has come to town to work on Wright Farm Road. Um, I went up today, yesterday, yesterday I, with David, who's the, the, the guy.
Yeah.
Um, and she certainly is in rough shape up through there. So I talked to Opie and, what's he doing over there?
Changing perspective, yeah.
And they needed some, uh, tailings, some material to put in.
Huh?
So they're hauling some out of the, with their ton truck out of the
Did we have some
Tailings from the sand screening operation.
So we had some to offer for market?
Yeah, I guess. There's plenty up there.
Alright.
And, uh, I asked him if maybe the town could haul a couple of loads down, stage them down there for him.
How, okay.
Just
How is that, so it looked to me like since the people driving around in the river
Yeah.
it looked like maybe they'd also driven out on Wright Farm Road.
They did.
And what's the situation?
Uh, they made a hell of a mess of it. They made a hell of a mess of everything down there.
Okay.
So David actually put, so when you go out there, there's always an issue where it drains, that wetland drains across right there. So I put tailings, same, the same material in that whole length of road several years ago.
Yeah.
Um, so he actually lowered it and put a Ford in.
Yeah.
Where he was gonna put a culvert in, but I asked him not to because a culvert's just another pain in the butt and it's gonna So now there's a, there's a, there's a pretty good, David is no, we call them gilder bars because he digs deep. He, he, when he leaves a water bar, it's there, and there'll be, water bars will be there when he gets done, but um, that's really what it needs right now, is to control the water. And then next year, they're gonna, they still have a pending R T P grant.
Oh, but they're not getting to it till next
They're not gonna get to it this year just because of the time and the, there's, there's quite a bit of work that needs to be done up there if you're gonna do that. So this year, they're just trying to stabilize it. That big tube you see, they see down there at the bottom of, there's one spot where I think I've got a three foot culvert in there now, and it just fails every year, every year, every year, every year. Well, that's, that pipe has a long history with me. I buried it twice. And the last time I buried it over and burned it, I thought I'd get rid of it forever and ever. And lo and behold, it washed out and almost a mile down off the mountain and landed next to Route Five over there.
Stayed right back there.
So, yeah, it ended up back here. I can't even believe it's back here. I'm telling you, it's just, it's weird, it's wild. I mean, I've, I've moved that thing so many times and I, when I buried, I actually had a party, I celebrated when I buried it and burned it because it was finally gone.
Maybe you should take it home.
So David's gonna put it up there now. And that'll, it'll work great. It's the perfect spot for it. I don't believe he's gonna get, accomplish it because I know how this thing works. It's rolled off the trailer twice on me into the opposite ditch from where I wanted it. It's just
Yeah, it's monster.
It's gotta, it's gotta, and it's one of those things where somebody gives you something for free. All metals donated it to, to the VASSA at least ten years ago. And it's been just a logistical nightmare ever since, so that's his, that's his problem now. Bottom line is they are taking care of Wright Farm Road, so
But, but most of the project's gonna happen next year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but it will be possible for the snowmobiles and, and you'll be able to at least bike it and bike it and stuff this
All the way up there.
Right, but it'll be much better.
Yeah.
And the water will be going not from the top to the bottom.
Yes.
I mean, that's ideally this year, all they're doing is controlling the water, stopping the water from, from, from more erosion.
Right.
Um, and the Harvick Woodbury Rail Trail had their meeting, their scheduling problems. I didn't go Wednesday night. But, uh, as far as that goes, it's really, doesn't have a whole lot to do with us at this point. They're just trying to get the Woodbury section under control.
I did have a thought regarding Harvick Woodbury Rail Trail relative to people biking down Wilkens Street.
Yeah.
When you're biking down Wilkens Street, you could turn right at Salma Lane on the Harvick Woodbury Rail Trail and take that around and get on the Mono Valley Rail Trail.
There's, there's no reason why that couldn't be a decent trail in the summer.
Yeah.
Then how would anybody know that?
Well, if it were approved, you can't, so right now you can't.
Silence.
Silence.
Right.
And arrow.
So the A T V club is not very active this year, and I didn't, I don't think they can get down through there, can they?
Yeah. I'm just saying that that's it.
Especially when it becomes a time card.
Oh, okay. Alright.
You ready for another?
Yes.
So, uh, the townhouse has two more events before we close down for the winter season, or the, you know, off season, we'll call it. Um, the Historical Society has a presentation on Monday night. Um, can't remember the name of the author, but it's about architecture in Vermont and, uh,
Oh, it's the
If we're here
Almost, was it Budka? Bud did, Budka?
Something, I don't know. Anyway, if we're here, she would be able to give us all that information. It's on the sign at the townhouse. On the side, on the opposite side, so when you're coming down Slap Hill, you'll see it. Um, and the other event is on Friday, the twenty fifth, and it's the Vermont Stur Mash being, um, put on by Neck Arts and, um, it's a costume dance party, family fun event, seven to ten P M. Birdhouse Band is gonna be playing. That's, uh, Mavis and Amy Rowell, and I don't know exactly who else. Um, so that's happening before we close down.
Great.
And the construction is going along nicely and
Oh, good.
and they'll continue to be working, but turning the heat off and stuff. They used to work in the cold.
Is there a timeline for the construction?
Um, I don't know. I mean, how does it work? Yeah, they're working until they're done. No, we have them until they're done. Yeah, the lift has been ordered, the different windows and things have been ordered. If you go on D E O P Street, you'll see that the old, what used to be a fire exit door is now turned into a well, it looks just like all the other windows.
We got a bulkhead for sale.
Yeah, there's a bulkhead to be used on another town building or something. Yeah, because it needed to move four inches, so it changed. Yeah, taken off. It's relatively new. I mean, it was put on by, in John Jewett's time, so it's not super old. It's a decent bulkhead.
Great. Other reports? Uh, new business? Old business?
Old business? You want me to ask the old business?
Do we, yeah, but I'll go ahead. You go first. You got one too?
Yeah.
I've got one too.[1772.34]
Oh, my gosh.
No, you can articulate this.
So where are we with re-engaging with SE Group for the pedestrian bridge?
Or engineering ventures or doing some sort of limited agreement with them?
This karma.
Because don't we want that to happen before winter so that we can go out to bid? If, we don't have to go out to bid.
Not for the wallwork.
But if we need, if we need to, if the bridge needs to be longer or whatever, we need to know that. And there might be design work involved.
And they'll go back and they'll have to go back to permitting again.
Oh, yeah.
If it's different. Might not be different.
So, so, but we need to get them on, back on track in some limited way.
What are you talking about?
The pedestrian bridge, I thought that was on, oh.
I'd like to get the wallwork done and...
The wallwork is the reason I'd said no, 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 2.4 million wallwork?
Well, we gotta, we don't have the money to do it, but I'd like to get that done. We need to bond for that.
Why do, why, why do we need to do that?
In anticipation of FEMA, FEMA has obligated 2.4 million for this project. They've obligated the money, so we need to spend the money to get it back. So we need to bond, we need to do an anticipation bond for it. Probably a spring bonding.
I just, I just can't, I don't know, I just can't do it.
Or we can just leave the wall the way it is?
Oh, I just, it's too hard for me to think about wasting money like that. We're talking between the swing bridge and the diner. Yeah, spending 2.4 million dollars.
On a wall that holds up Main Street.
But wait, just that section. We're not talking about the whole, just that.
Yeah, that 100 feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's what it's been out of, yeah.
But my point is, is that doesn't need to cost that much. Who says it needs to cost that much?
If we don't do micro piles, if we, if we have another engineer look at it and don't do micro piles, it's going to significantly reduce the price. So we can...
So why wouldn't we do that?
We, we definitely can.
I mean, I, I want to fix it and all, but I mean, you guys, I'm in the construction world.
Sure.
2.4 million dollars.
Yeah, they have...
That's absolutely ridiculous. For, to put eyes, I got a joke. Eyes, it's bedrock, it's sitting on bedrock. Sitting on bedrock, there's lead sticking out of the ground. Everybody, go to the diner, I'll pay for everybody's breakfast tomorrow, look out the window and you see the bedrock.
What time?
Anytime. I'll leave my, I'm there at 6, but I'll leave, I'll get my credit card.
Okay.
Just so you can look out the window and see that there's bedrock, that's what's right there.
So can I?
Yes, you can. I'm not trying to be hard.
I understand exactly what you're saying.
This is the problem with why our bids, I mean, this is a great example, not to cut you off, but these bids we got tonight is a great example of that.
Because they know the state's giving us money.
Because they know there's, but it's a work out there, there's no contractors. And if you, if you're cycled, so I'm busy now, so I'm throwing out bids of a half a million dollars for a $100,000 budget. Well, if it rotates around to where I don't have work and that bid comes up, I'm sitting pretty. If not, and I run out of work, I just start bidding normal again. So we're paying, you know, if somebody can explain to me why we have to have 2.4 million dollars in this little section of wall, I have the capacity to understand that. But I'm telling you right now, you're going to have a pretty hard job convincing me of spending that kind of money. And I mean, I'm not a firm believer that it's free money. I'm a believer it's our money.
I would agree.
Well, I'd rather have, be able to have funding to fix something like our sewer plant. I mean, if, as, in America, if we keep pissing this money away, there's only so much money to go around.
Can I tell you where the costs are?
Yeah.
In that project?
Yeah.
So from what I understand about that project, it's a complicated project because they have to sheet the entire Main Street. So the sheeting alone is a cost. So they have to drive sheeting in to hold back Main Street. And it's really tight there. And then the engineer that stamped it, designed it eight times the amount of strength it needs to be. So I've been told by people, by contractors that have looked at it. So the micro piles that they've said, I think they've called for like seven, or 70-something micro piles or something. Okay, or I don't know what the number is. So you could, so when an engineer stamps the drawings, like their liability is on their engineering. So that's why they design things eight times the strength.
So they're not doing their job if they're designing it eight times the strength?
And is that Engineering Ventures?
The strength, the strength, the strength...
So, so if we want to do something differently there and re-engineer it, value engineer it, we have to pay, we have to pay for an engineer to re-engineer it and look at it. Like, we can totally do that and I think, I think that's our, that's our being responsible. So we do have a project obligated by FEMA, we do have to do the work. How we get, how we, who we pay for an engineer, how they engineer it, the means and methods of the project is all in the cost.
I agree. So I would go on record as saying to you guys, if you, I understand that this is probably, you guys, if the select board feels it, move forward, move forward. I just have a problem with it.
Yeah.
I just think this should not be an old business and it should be an item because the last, I remember us having an open conversation about this. We were putting that project entirely on hold so that way we could focus on other flood related issues. It's okay if it comes back up, but I don't want to make it...
The bridge, the bridge.
The bridge, but even, but that's what was just brought up and then it turned into this conversation. So I think, like...
Sure.
So...
Yeah, sure.
Yep.
What?
So we can do it as, we can talk about it as a next time.
But to your point, you're right, this was about the bridge.
Yeah.
But the wall has to be, the, the bridge has no FEMA funding.
But the bridge...
And the 2.4 million, that whole project is 100% no cost to us as a taxpayer.
There's seven, we have a 25% cost on top of what the state would put in. So 12.5% would have to come out of our coffers.
So that's...
So that's something...
Yeah. 12% of 2.4 is pretty high.
Yeah.
And it's, so, not to, I'm not, my goal is not to postpone any of this, but...
That actually might be 90%. Because there is...
But either way, there's going to be...
No, it's not 90%, so it's 75%.
It's, town's going to be obligated some of the money.
Yeah.
And that has to be done before the bridge, the wall.
Does it?
I don't...
At the same time?
It can be done at the same time. It was designed to do it at the same time.
So we don't, my point is, we don't have the money for you to run.
I think we are close on, and we have a plan to fill the gap on the bridge.
Close for the bridge. And if we don't pursue the bridge for next year, most of that money is only extended to next year.
Yeah.
And we, one of the reasons we said last time, last time we discussed it, that we thought it was just going to have to go on hold was, I believe that was before we had the all funders meeting.
Right, and we found out that they would extend it and they would let us...
Everybody was more cooperative than we had anticipated.
So that wasn't reported back to us?
It was not. So that's definitely our bad.
So we can just move this to an agenda.
Yeah, for next time. I think that's a good idea.
It sounds like there's no stuff, no information.
There's, new information has come to life. We were pleasantly surprised, so.
We did talk about the funders meeting.
We talked about the funders meeting and we talked about how there's, I talked about last meeting, I think, how we found out that we can go back to transportation funds for another round of funding for the same project. And so that application will get done, and be due sometime in November, I think, or something, I don't know, January, I don't know. But it's for next season, it's for next season, yeah.
Yeah, so the idea is we could get the bridge and the project, the these and the bridge and the wall go together largely is because you're working in such a tight space and it would be really disruptive to Main Street.
It'd be ideal to do it all in one shot.
Right. Okay, so we should have items for this next time. I totally agree that it'd be awesome to bring the cost down on the wall. I guess...
Looking at whatever other engineers...
I think the only, I, I would say our first and best hope would be to push back on Engineering Ventures and say, could you, you know, here's the feedback we got from contractors, could you look at this again? Because we're going to have a hard time getting somebody else on board, starting from nowhere.
And we could bid it out, we could put it back out on the street and there's contractors hungry for work and we can see what competitive bidding does. That is an option.
Right. All right, so we'll talk about it next time.
Yeah, I don't know, it's just, it's wild to me.
But we're still going to have to borrow the money.
Right, in anticipation of FEMA.
I just had a really quick, do we have any other updates, Oki, on the sale? I should have asked this earlier on the two real estate sales.
We have an option agreement signed with Vermont Huts. They're working on some funding stuff and some permitting stuff.
I haven't seen Vermont Huts yet.
Yeah, no permitting yet, but they have to get some things in order to be able to apply for permits.
Yeah.
And they need to get the permits before they can do the sale, do the purchase. And then the carryover property, the buyer has decided to do a title search. And they said they'd get in touch with me.
So I guess they gave me the information, okay? They did the title search. Now they're just waiting for next week to...
Oh, they want to do the permits.
They want to do the permits. So they have their DRV, they submit their applications, they have a DRV hearing next week.
Okay, great.
For building.
For, they want to get their permits in place before they buy it.
For construction.
For their business. It's a change of views.
Which, which involves tearing the building down?
Tearing the building down and putting in a Quonset hut and an office and hat and chain of booths.
I think there's a Quonset hut available. We would give them a Quonset hut.
See, talk to them directly. I am not brokering a Quonset hut. I'm dealing with the DRV decisions so that they buy the property so that you guys get your money.
So yeah, we're, that's where we're at.
All right.
Yeah.
I'm waiting, I'm waiting on some information from them.
Great, thank you.
Danny, you had one too. Wake up.
Yeah, no.
You had an old business. I'm going to share.
Oh, my, so worked up. Oh, the cannabis.
Cannibal cannabis?
The cannabis meeting.
No. Oh, yes.
No ghosts?
I didn't go.
I'm on.
Thank you, Kristen.
Did you go?
No, I told you guys I could.
Oh, that's great.
It was more aimed at zoning administrators really. They were told by the state legislature that they needed to talk to their local control boards, but really it was, it was mostly zoning and planning people.
So, yeah, so there was no, yeah.
Yeah, there really wasn't much. I would have brought it back to you already.
There wasn't anything for shattering. Thank you for being our representative. Andy was trying to get us to...
I heard. I was already planning to go.
I'm not much of a motivator.
Thank you, Andy.
You're more of a shamer if you're motivated.
Any other, any other select board reports, new business or old business? All right, adjourned. Thank you.